There it goes.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
All right, Morgan Gregory.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to apply of the United States of America and to the legal public for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We're going to open with, let me see, your Orange County Bagels.
Yes.
We're going to read the public hearing. Please take notice that the zoning board of appeals of the Village of Washingtonville, Orange County, New York will hold a public hearing on the application of Orange County Bagel dash Brink Kunis for several variances to permit the construction of a business center on the property located on 32 West Main Street, Washingtonville, New York, further defined as Section 112, Block 4 and Lot 18. Said property being located in the neighborhood Business District. The applicant is seeking the following approvals from the zoning board of appeals. One, an area variance from the requirements of Section 175-56 dot A dot 1 of the Village Code permitting the required square foot, lot size to be reduced from 40,000 square foot to 32,544 square feet. Two, an area variance for a lot width from the requirements of Section 175-56 dot A dot 2 permitting the lot width to be reduced from the required 250 feet to 184.7 feet. Three, an area variance from the requirements of Section 175-56 point A. And four, A permitting the front yard setback to be 20 feet instead of the required 60 feet. Four, an area variance from the requirements of Section 175-56 dot A or B permitting the one side to be 6.5 feet instead of the required 40 feet. Five, a variance permitting an accessory building on the property pursuant to Section 175-81 point A, 1 and 2 of the Village Code. Six, a variance pursuant to Section 175-127. Point 6, point 8 of the Village Code permitting use of the municipal parking lot so as to permit the use of six village parking spaces to satisfy the parking requirements of the project. Seven, an area variance pursuant to Section 175-127. C point A permitting both side yards to be combined 70.5 feet instead of the required 80 feet. Eight, a use variance from the requirements of Section 175-53. Point H of the Village Code permitting business center development and permitting two primary businesses uses to exist on one lot. The public hearing will be held on the third day of February 2021 at 7:00 p.m. at the village hall meeting room, 9 Fair Lawn Drive, Washingtonville, New York 10992, at which time all interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard. We'll open the meeting for Orange County Bagels. I'll make a motion to open the meeting.
Second motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. Amador LaFut, Pelencer Engineering, presenting Orange County Bagel. And I think we would like to clarify on the use variance that we listed area variances or the use variance. So we would like to appear here for the area variances, believing that the use variance was not recommended by the planning board. So it'd be either or. If we were to come for the use variance, we wouldn't need the area variances.
Okay, so.
Okay, so we're here to ask for the area variances.
Instead of the use variance?
Yes.
Okay.
So we are here. If you see the screen, that's 32 West Main Street.
Was. Love it Betty's.
Betty's Diner. So this was taken recently just this past year. And we were proposing, and we've been in front of the planning board and have referred here for the variances, a new building that would have three businesses or suites in the same building. So here's West Main Street. We're keeping the existing driveway and parking area side and rear. The front and the rear would both have porches.
That's good.
And it would be a front entrance and a rear.
Maybe a little more, say air more.
To the property.
Okay, give that a good look.
There's any.
One, one building to be split into three?
Yes, so there'd be.
Stores or?
Three suites, side by side.
One store.
One store.
So let me show you the architectural rendering of the front. So from Main Street, we have Orange County Bagel and then two other stores next to it. You see the.
But not your stores?
Correct.
That you're renting, you're going to be renting out?
Yes.
Now, one of them. Here's what we're going to do. There's three locations there. One of them's going to be an Orange County Bagel. One of them's going to most likely be a chiropractic office.
Chiropractic, physical therapy location.
And the other one where we're speaking to multiple people about taking that.
All right, so it is one story. Even though you see the gables with the windows, that would just be a high ceiling, not a second story there. So from the rear, a similar view. So we wanted to match the architecture of the village. Here, we also have the porch in the rear, and this is from the parking lot.
Entrance is both sides.
Yes, correct. So in the NB district, we were looking at the zoning. It was a little bit strange that there doesn't seem to be one lot in the entire district that can meet the permitted uses of this business development center, meaning more than one business in the building. So it was decided when we're at planning board that the best way to pursue this is to ask for a number of these variances. So if I go back to the proposed plan. So here, it's a lot. We would like to keep a walkability to the rest of the village so the existing sidewalk would remain. We're putting the building closer to the sidewalk. And this area here would be an outdoor patio area.
That's on the street side?
Yes, the street is on the right. So as you drive by, there would be.
Where you have the arrow, that's a patio?
Yes.
It looks like it's right on the street. Maybe I'm getting it right here.
Yeah, there's a sidewalk here that's not shown on this map.
Yeah, I was going to say, where is this up? Like, is there a sidewalk?
So we have a sidewalk.
It's a sidewalk and a grassy strip that's not showing really.
Okay.
Correct. I can't quite see it, but this is taken from the sidewalk and there's a grassy strip.
So you'd be utilizing the whole front lawn of Betty's as a porch patio almost up to the glass grate before the sidewalk?
No, it's set back. It's probably almost to the point of where that building exists now.
Where the porch starts? Maybe it's the Betty's porch, I mean?
Yeah, basically.
Yes.
It's going to be the same distance that Betty's is off the road.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, just with the drawing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a little confusing.
The drawing, it looks like it's right on the street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you guys see?
This is the existing, okay, so it's 30. You know, can I show you the picture? Do you want to see this?
Sure. I'm a photographer, so pictures really don't.
Yeah, that's currently Betty's right now.
Right.
This is kind of what we've been doing. So basically, you're looking at it's going to be the same effect. This would be a patio right here, but this, all this grass and that sidewalk would obviously.
Yeah, you know how he had the pathway that the sidewalk.
Yeah, the sidewalk.
Yeah, the.
So you're talking about basically, it's basically the same. I think he is coming working off the road.
And what's the spacing of the? Okay, here it is.
Yeah, that's.
I was just curious as to how much each one's going to offer. Eighteen hundred?
Yeah, each would be 1,800 square feet, 5,400 square feet for the building. So we have as much parking as we can fit on site. And that would mean one of the variances would be to be allowed to use parking across the street. So we have 33 on site, 39 are required by zoning.
Is there a crosswalks there?
Not going to be.
That could be interesting. Would that be a building thing? Or would that be?
That would, no, it's a state road. So that would, I believe that would have to go to DOT.
That makes me a little nervous, but I guess you choose where you're going to park. But just putting it out there.
Are you still, continue with the last question for me to interrupt you.
Okay, well, that was just wrapping up. So we just wanted to match the character of the village. We'll be presenting colors and other parts of the architectural design when they're ready. We just have the rock point renderings right now. And we'd like to answer any questions.
How many square feet is that building there now?
Oh, Betty's perfect.
It's like 3,500 square feet.
Is that the, is that the gray square that's depicted on the map? Is that Betty's building in the drawing?
This doesn't actually.
Yeah, that edge, the area, is that part of the building now?
Which one?
Well, this would be the.
That hyphenated line there.
These would be the setbacks to meet business development setup.
Okay, got it.
So that's part of the variances that we would need to ask for for everything.
Is there a reason why you're building three buildings versus two to stay within? You know, not to, not to be.
What do you mean, three buildings?
Well, I thought that you were utilizing all three buildings.
You mean, you mean three?
Three businesses.
Three separate.
To make, you know, to make it a smaller building so that there wouldn't be. You seem like you're renting out. You're, it's almost an investment that you're. Are you still keeping your store in Ocean?
Oh, yeah.
Is it going to be the main store that's going to be cooking, making the bagels?
This is going to be his fourth location and it would be my second.
Oh, I love you babe, I go home all the time.
No, no, we, well, basically, what we did with this lot is we looked at it and we see what kind of investment we have to make because unfortunately, the building has, I don't know if it's been in the building since the fire, but right now, the building is just stuck.
Right.
I mean, everything.
It's coming down.
Yeah, to redo the building would be.
It costs more.
Would cost more. And unfortunately, the way that building sits, I think there's like 12, 14 steps to walk in it. It's not really a building where, I mean, it's very hard.
It's not advantageous to.
Exactly, it's just not something that we can do.
Right.
So when we look at the property and we figure out how much we have to invest in the property, the property taxes, the this, the that, everything, we just figured that's the best investment that we can make on the property is to put, you know, put a store there and then put a location that big to fit, you know, with the parking and everything. That's why we came up with something that sucked. And I, from my bagel shop, I only need 1,800 square feet, roughly. He needs about similar to that. So we would have in excess, extra 1,800 square feet that we figured we utilize to, you know, give our, to give our investment.
What would the rent be on that extra shop?
What would the rent be? Saying the rate.
What would the amount be? Like, how much would you be looking to charge for the extra building?
Somewhere around 17.
Not building?
You mean the extra space? Somewhere around $17 a square foot.
Well, with the area variance, you're looking to basically claim that the alleged difficulty was not self-created, but in fact, it kind of is because you're building three buildings versus keeping within.
Just one building.
It's one building, but.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm.
I keep getting caught up on that as well.
Yeah, it's one building, but three. Instead of making it three different within one, you could make it two and.
Well, here's, here's the major issue with, with the property, which is why we came up. If you look at the property, you guys have, you have obviously something called the NB, NB district, which the NB district goes from basically our property to, let's say, the police station. It goes up 208 to like nailed it, the hardware store, and then it goes up 208 to Little Test Church.
Right.
So that's the NB district. Now, in your NB district, you guys have in your code that any piece of property in that area that's less than 80,000 square feet, which is almost two acres. That was a mistake also in the variance required. It says 40,000 to 80,000. When you guys read the first variance we're seeking, it should be 80,000.
Yeah, that's how I have them like.
Yeah, I thought somebody said 40,000.
Yeah, I have 80,000.
Oh, okay, I thought somebody said 40,000.
I pulled, I pulled up the public notice. I was just reading off the public notice. Yeah, I only read what was here.
So what happens is in that, in that area, you have where any lot under 80,000 square feet, as per your code, you can only have one business on. Which is, which if you think about that for a second, it's, it's crazy because 80,000 square feet's almost two acres.
Right.
Now, that's the only reason we're going for the variances is because if you think about it, 80,000 square foot in a, in a village where it's tight, because this is the core of the, of the village, 80,000 square feet, you don't have a single lot, that's what he was referring to before, that's 80,000 square feet except the church lot. So therefore, in your code, there's zero development that could ever happen in the Village of Washingtonville in their main core area where they want development, the NB Business District. That can happen without anybody seeking seven variances.
Well, I think probably that's because of the roads, the way they go. We have two state roads going through our village unlike any other village in the area. And the traffic is, you know, right now with COVID, school's not open.
Yeah.
But it's impossible two times, three times a day to get through the village at all. You cannot, you cannot get through. It's unpassable. So I think that that's a consideration that is reasonable for that code. I'm just presuming.
No, no, I understand that. But if you think about it, if you have a lot that's, that's two acres, and unless you're putting a, let's say, a warehouse or something that was, that was a huge space on there, there's really no way you'd be able to utilize it for a small, for any type of, let's say, called hometown, local, small businesses, which is kind of what they, when we first started, what they wanted, like walkability, small businesses, people being, you know, going through the village. So that's why it's kind of like, that's the reason for the seven variances is because it's kind of an odd setup. Like, if you go through your village, you have multiple small lots with four businesses and four businesses, four businesses in different buildings. So it's kind of like, ah, you know.
One part and giant.
Right, well, we're, yeah, unfortunately, we can't be a war with a, or we'd love to be, but unfortunately, that, that's not feasible with our roads.
You, I had a quick question. Do you feel with the, the low level of parking that we're asking for that it would really impact the traffic any, much more than what you have going on now?
I'm not concerned with the, you, you've covered the parking because you're within 500 feet of a, of public parking area. So the parking spots are not of any.
Well, besides that, I just meant, I meant you kind of alluded to the fact you were concerned about the, how we might contribute to traffic flow or whatnot.
Well, just people going, you know, now to a store that's, right, a bagel store is different than going and sitting down. It's basically in and out. So you're going to have, kind of like Dunkin' Donuts. I mean, the other day Dunkin' Donuts, the lot, the line was out on 94. So that's kind of the business that you're going to be, have people stopping for a bagel before, and coffee before they go to work.
That was probably their drive-through though? Just to.
Yeah.
Oh, and, oh, yeah. Oh, no, it is, but it's still, you're going to, your main probably business is going to be people going in, ordering a bag of bagels, getting some spreads, coffee, a bagel before they go to work. So it's going to be in and out. You're not a dining per se. It's going to be similar to the Goshen area. Plus, you're going to have delivery trucks, I'm presuming, going in and out, delivering to your other locations.
Um, not really.
No?
It doesn't make the bagels there.
Oh, okay.
No, I mean, I wouldn't be making them there for my other.
Yeah.
I'd be making them there for them.
Just for your store?
Yeah.
Where do you make the bagels now?
I make bagels in Middletown for the other stores, but I don't want to make bagels in Middletown for Washingtonville. I want to make bagels in Washingtonville for Washingtonville because I have some other expansion stuff.
Is the Grandpa Cheesecake or whatever that is, that building in the back?
Yes.
What's happening with that? Still on the?
He, he left that location. Nothing to do with us, nothing to do with Betty's, nothing to do with.
So you would utilize it?
We would like to.
Yeah, we'd like to utilize it, correct.
Storage or something of the nature?
Or rent something that could go there that, that's approved or that's.
So you would be renting that as well?
We'd like to rent it out to some, to something.
By a screen stand or something along that line.
So that would be more traffic going in and out as far as people and you, you, that's.
Well, no, we would, we would rent it out to whatever is allowable to go there.
Whatever you, whatever you feel deemed fit.
Could be an office, it could be anything.
Yeah, a non-food related thing could be.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was never any issue with that.
Yeah, no, no, not. And they made Greek cheese cake for it on this.
It seems to me also too, like it, like especially Prince Business, which is different, whether what mine will be, it seems very compatible to what was actually already there already. You know what I mean?
Well, Betty's was, you, you, when you sat for an hour, an hour and a half, you know, it was in dining, which is different than an in and out. You're basically talking about like a deli type of, type of store.
Well, he has seating inside, don't you as well? He's going to have seating.
I know, but you're not going to, people aren't, families aren't going, we went there for dinner.
Oh, I understand.
You know what I'm saying? That's where they have that in dining. This is basically, he's basically a stop and go, stop and go.
I hear you.
Pulling in, pulling out.
Does the board have any questions on the Zoom?
I'm concerned about the traffic also, to be honest with you. This is the big area.
I mean, the tra, the traffic.
That's really.
The traffic's a planning issue, remember?
Yeah, that's a. Do we.
I think, I think.
See the report or do we? I'll see anything.
I think what everybody would agree is from seven till, from quarter to seven till quarter to eight in the morning.
Yeah.
Nobody wants to be in that area. And from two, two to three, nobody wants to be in that area. The light goes from the light in town, past the high school.
Oh, and if, when the buses are coming, you're, you're not getting anybody. I mean, it's, it's 100 buses lined up.
But, but I think that outside of that, I think during the school day.
You're going to have kids walking there too.
Once nine o'clock comes, it's free sailing until three.
I'll be honest with you, in our other stores, my business, I have stragglers up till eight o'clock. I don't, that's not really my main business area. So, I mean, I, I've been here before. I've sat out front. I've watched it after two o'clock with everybody bustling out of the school. I've sat here in the morning and I've watched it bumper to bumper in the morning. And it kind of clears out before our kind of busy time starts. And our busiest two days of the week are Saturday and Sunday. There's no school.
Is the busiest time like after nine?
I would say our busiest time is probably for our morning. Are you talking during the week?
Yeah.
During the week, probably 8:30 to 10:30 because that's when a lot of people are going to work, getting to work, doing that. Then we have our lunch crowd. And on the weekends, it's a little bit of a later crowd. For the weekend, we're kind of busy. We all, we're only open till 2:30 on the Saturday.
What are your hours going to be?
Probably, well, actually, here, I would say it depends because we're going to be next to the schools.
Right.
So realistically, my other stores are open from 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Actually, in Goshen, we're open till four. But realistically here, who knows? I couldn't be open till five. I, I don't ever anticipate myself being open past five under any situation.
Right.
I might want to get some after-school crowd or something like that. So, you know, after-school activities if you ever have school again.
Plus, you got a lot. Plus, you got a, you got a lot of commuters.
Well, that, yeah.
You got a lot of commuters here.
And you got a lot of commuters.
So like, six might be actually, you might, you might do better to be at five.
Yeah.
I mean, realistically, we get to our stores at five thirty, and we're open, I would, I mean, five thirty to four would be a very solid estimate of my hours here. On the weekends, we close earlier.
Yeah, oh, you'll make a bundle being open at five, you'll get the commuters going to work and stopping, make good coffee.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's kind of where we would be hours-wise, and obviously, chiropractic office would be open over to be from like nine to five.
No, we, we would open seven thirty in the morning, and then, you know, on a, on a three-day week, we could be there from seven thirty up until six thirty.
Well, yeah, you, you go by appointment.
Yeah, it's all appointment.
Yeah.
What was the timeline that you said it was miserable to get through there, though?
Four to seven. It's like two to three, and from like, quarter to seven, and seven to eight, David.
Oh, so it's a short window, like a half hour?
Yeah, it's just like another time, about an hour.
An hour, an hour, an hour, a little bit more, a bit more maybe.
Okay.
Do you have, uh, any idea what your third business would be in there?
What, what you would?
Honestly, I, I would say a hundred percent not food. Um, I don't want food. Um, we're looking at different offices, like, for example, a, um, orthodontist. There's possibly a, a young lady who might wanna put a children's, um, hard to explain, like a, what's it called? Like a jamboree type of place, that type of place.
Yeah.
Um, I, I want good, clean businesses. Obviously, we're not, we're not, because we, not because we can't, but we don't want, we're not putting a liquor store there, we're not putting a food place, we're not putting something that's gonna jam up what we're doing.
We need the parking as well for our businesses.
Yeah, we wanna put something that complements.
Well, if you're doing something like a jamboree, well, I'll tell you, the dance studio is, that, that packs everything, so that.
Well, it'd be more like an apartment, those things are a little bit, that's different than I think what she's looking for.
Yeah.
Where it's a limited amount of children in there at a time or something like that, you know?
I'm not exactly even sure what, what she wants. But I'm not even sure that we're doing it.
Yeah, but we're looking for a good, solid, clean business that's gonna complement us and, and, and obviously not be something that's gonna be like a liquor store. Like you said, you can't have that near, near schools, you know?
You mentioned that, um, what I, we brought up about, um, that this difficulty was not self-created. What is the cost to you to build or to take, are you, the cost is to take down Betty's? What, what is the cost to you? And what would be the difference if you eliminated one of the shops?
Well, here's the thing, the, the, the way the place sits, the building unfortunately has to come down.
Right.
Um, it's, it's, unless you find someone who says, I wanna put a better breakfast in there, and put, you put four hundred thousand dollars into the building, that's the only way that building really stays up, unfortunately. And I don't know if that's feasible for anybody to.
Yeah.
I mean, the way that, I mean, there, there's, there's, there's taxes on the building that are significant, obviously. Once we write it down, put a new building, our taxes are gonna go up, they're gonna reassess the building at that point.
Yeah.
So if they, once they reassess it, we have our costs for the taxes. We have our costs to build the building. Right now, lumber is sky-high, so that's gonna cost us money. And at that point, we're, for two businesses, the third business gives us that cushion to be successful in that location. And that's really.
Well, it would cost you less to build it smaller.
Not, not significantly less, because, I mean, you're talking about, you're talking about the site plan is gonna be almost the same exact. Knocking down the building is gonna be exact. You're really talking about a, um, I don't wanna say minimal, but not a lot of money to really put up that third spot, and that's gonna generate us the money, the cushion to be successful for the project.
And it's not just that it's two, it's only, but zoning will have to be one for use. So unfortunately, we feel the, it's not self-created, because the way the zoning reads is, a business center development is defined on a lot of not less than eighty thousand square feet.
Right.
So we're saying we're under eighty thousand square feet, we're not a business center development. But it also reads that with any N B district, no building structure, lot or land should be used for other than one of the following uses. And if you were more than one, then you get tied to the business center development definition, even though the lot is too small. So we are, we're not using it for other than one of the following uses, which are office being one or restaurant being one. But what tied us up is that word one being used for other than one. So we feel, we're not using it for other than one.
Well, it's three separate businesses.
Yes. Well, it's, we're not using it for other than one of the following. We are one of the following as office and restaurant. But as explained at last, that one means, no, it's only one.
Right, but we don't know with the third one.
So that, that would mean we could only have one use on the lot. Or would be classified as business center development, even though we're less than eighty thousand square feet. So it's, it's kind of a contradiction in zoning for us. We're too small to be a business center development, but if you have more than one business, you are a business center development. So, and, and looking at the rest of the N B, uh, you see some of the photos here, it's just, would not meet the requirements of a business center development, which is sixty-foot front yards and eighty thousand square foot lots. And our number.
It's already established, basically.
Right, so we're, we're keeping with the character of the neighborhood.
Right. The coloring and everything is all planning, but I'd be interested in.
There's already existing multiple businesses is on the same, uh, lot for a lot of the district, so we don't feel that it's anything out of character.
Right, yeah, so this doesn't have parking, it has, you know, a few businesses in there.
You gotta remember too, I mean, he could, he could come forward and work with one business and have three times the volume of parking.
Right.
He'll generate for his, it's the same equivalent.
Right.
I mean, ultimately, talking about several businesses really doesn't answer the question of how many people. So he can come in and say, he's gonna come in as a single business, build the same building.
Right.
Ultimately, the same parking, and basically generate four times as much volume, and we'll sit here with the same question, go, how do they get now?
Right, right.
So it's not really, I think it's a cost benefit to build three, right? The basin here, he's gonna pour forty more gallons of concrete, right?
Yeah, right, yeah.
And we did get comments from the, the planning board consultant, and they did mention parking, but no concerns about traffic, traffic or engine comments. And I can show you.
Maybe if he goes there, Dunkin' Donuts laundry store.
Oh, listen, we need a good bagel store for sure, I mean, that would be.
If that, the day, whenever I heard bagels, I parked up and got something that fits in, and it can be a good guy, and you can fit it really nicely like Kevin did.
No, it would, that would, I'd love a good bagel store, I could travel so far to go get a good bagel. Terrible.
We've got to roll.
Any questions over there in Zoom town?
How many people are on the Zoom? I can't tell.
I was on, I was on that side last week.
Four, right there.
Tell me if you're from the board, if there's people from the board.
There's, there's four right now.
Four, four on the board, two, three here?
There's two here and there's two over there. There should be five, but there's one left, so, uh. You, you do understand why we're asking all these questions, because in the world that we live in, we just have to, you know.
Absolutely.
Setting precedents is, are difficult, because, you know, if we're not consistent with everyone, making everyone show the same.
We're perfectly fine with that.
You know, we, we just, um.
You understand, probably.
It's, it's, it's very difficult, um.
I'm glad that you put that up there, Bill, because that, that's a perfect example of fitting into what's already existing throughout this entire town. Is it's buildings with multiple businesses inside of them with hardly any parking. At least this would have parking.
Right.
And then the variance for the six.
But we have to think of the laws today, that would not be able to be, that would never be allowed.
Sure.
You know, so that's unfortunately the way it, it was for a hundred years. And a lot of them are, are, you know, basically residential office, whatever.